Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Everybody ready? Go ahead and call this evening's meeting to order for Tuesday, August 5th, Changersburg Area School District Board of Directors Committee, the whole meeting. If you please rise and join me for a pledge allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Prior to meeting this evening, the board did meet in executive session to discuss legal matters and real estate issues. Item 3.01 Superintendent's Report.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Norcross. I have a few items and then Mr. Widman has a few items as well for tonight. Do you want to say hello from Larry Rattling? He came and just visited me and took me out to lunch. So Larry says he just wanted to say hello and he just wanted to check in and see how things were going. He drove all the way and even bought me lunch and so I said, Larry, I'm going to say hello for you tonight. So Larry says hi and he does get online and kind of look at what we're doing online. So he's very still interested, so good person. We are going to get an award. It'll come out at the next meeting. I don't want to share what it is yet. But the school district's getting an award and will be recognized at the 19th board meeting. So we're excited about that award. Stay tuned for the 19th. We did also receive an excellent special education audit. If there is such a thing as an excellent one, there's always special education topics, but we were very proud. Sri was very proud of this audit. They worked hard to get it cleaned up and I just want to recognize them publicly and thank them for all their work getting the special education audit to a good place. So very happy about that. Enrollment numbers were about 73 to the plus from last year at this time and then an additional 113 to date for all the cyber school, homeschool and outside placements. So if you add them both together, we're around 186 plus. Now, not all of them come to school physically. Some are homeschool, some are cyber school outside the district. So we're sticking along that trend of about 1%, half a percent to 1% a year in enrollment increasing overall. That's the end of my report. Mr. Widman?
New teacher induction starts on Monday. We have a lot of folks that are coming on board. The newly hired content specialists that were part of the staffing enhancements will work with and mentor the new teachers. We did move new teacher induction to a multi-year process. That's honoring the CSD Blueprint Committee's request to support and retain our staff. And we are very excited about the work our directors are doing to support with the content specialists. They meet with them next week to plan and look out into the future for how we will deliver our support and to support our staff and professional development. We are also very excited with the staffing enhancements that were approved back in the spring for our new dean of students, interventionists and counselors in the elementary and we're looking forward to a great year with more supports. Professional staffing is in a much better spot this year. We started the hiring process much earlier. Just a little bit on that process. The elementary principals interviewed together. If they did well, they taught a lesson at a school. If they did well there, they contacted Chris and I and they came over and interviewed with us on that same day. If they did well with Mr. Bigger and myself, we turned him over to Tina and the folks loved it. So we were able to hire 22 staff using that process and we did that early and we feel we really hired some high-quality staff back in February. Student orientations, open houses and kickstarts for our kindergarten students are already taking place on August 20th. This is something new and different that we're going to be doing. We will be running our buses and vans for the morning and afternoon runs where parents and students can go out to their pickup spots and see their buses or their vans, meet their driver. Brian Miller will be working on a media campaign to get that out, but that's a great start for the... A lot of folks get nervous about their transportation.
What dates are those again?
That's August 20th. So we will be doing the buses and vans in the morning and the evening. And August 19th, our directors will be reporting out at the next meeting, out for their divisions and for the start of school. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mr. Widman. As far as president's report, it seems like it was just yesterday when we were talking about graduation. So summer has raced right by us all. So that means we're all getting ready to go back to school. Staff is continuing to work diligently. The board, we even took a little recess vacation, if you will. We didn't meet in July, but now we're back to normal business. And so just my public safety word is, I'm going to hitchhike on Mr. Widman's, is to the public that, you know, school buses are going to start running soon. So in my profession, we do what's called toolbox talks. And this time of year, I always do a toolbox talk about, you know, be careful because you're going to start seeing school buses. Maybe you got used to driving to work in the morning and not having to worry about that school bus. So when school starts, maybe give yourself five or 10 extra minutes so you're not in a hurry and everyone stays safe. My other comment tonight is a follow-up from June's meeting. I have often sat here and I will continue to do it. You know, we are in the midst of Schools of Distinction by 2030 project and there is a huge financial impact. And those of you who want to criticize me for talking about the financial impact, you're more than welcome to continue to criticize me and I'll accept it. It's what I accept when you sit, any one of us sit in this seat. It doesn't matter what neighborhood you live in or what tax you pay, right? I'm more worried about those that a tax increase impacts them the most. And you will see, you know, one of our early presentations, there are some years here where it's a 2.6% tax increase just to help fund this Schools of Distinction by 2030. I personally think that, I can't mention it enough times. I don't mention it because I'm against it. As you all know, I've been in favor of it since three years ago when we started ramping up for this occasion. It's out there for information. I'm going to share a story or parable. Mr. Widman remembers this. This was prior to the COVID days. There was a gentleman who used to come to almost every school board meeting. He'd always come up and talk to me and I call him my friend. Haven't seen my friend. Last time I mentioned him, Kirk told me he was still doing well. I hope he still is. That's great. But anyway, my friend, I appreciate him because he would come up and he was very frank with me. And when he disagreed with me, he would tell me, very politely, very succinctly. And when he agreed with me, he would tell me in the same tone and same manner. It didn't matter whether he agreed with me or disagreed with me. But the one day, and I cannot remember what the topic was, and I can't even remember whether I voted for it or I voted against it. I can't remember whether he agreed or disagreed with me, but it had to do with the tax implication. Because I remember my friend telling me, he's like, you know, he says, "I live on a fixed income and the only way I can stay in my current house is my sister helps me pay my taxes." And that story to this day resonates with me. And so again, I don't care what neighborhood you live in and how many new homes you may be building in your neighborhood and what the value of the homes are in your neighborhood. I'm worried about the gentleman like my friend who really, you know, any tax increase impacts us. So I bring this up to people's attention just to keep it in the forefront and to be considerate and thoughtful of people like my friend. So with that, that ends my report for tonight. Thank you. Presentations segue into Schools of Distinction by 2030, 4.01. Dr. Long?
I'd like to introduce Crabtree Roadball again. They haven't been here for a little bit. So we went and have some new faces as well. But Anthony is the lead architect on our project. Sean and Nicole are also the architects on the project, so they are going to present.
All right. Good evening. Thanks for having us. I think the last update that I gave was in the spring, May, and what I reviewed was the design process for the intermediate school. So we're going to give you an update on the master plan for the Green Village campus, which includes the K3 and the 456 building. So for the agenda, I'm going to give you a refresher of a slide that I showed you from the previous presentation that talked about the schematic design. So it's a checklist and all the items that we've been working on over the summer, just so that you have an understanding of where should we be at this part of the process. One of the things that we've been doing is a lot of visioning with the administration. One of those exercises that we did was we took them to a couple of schools for them to tour. We had some projects that we felt that were similar size or scope or maybe there's something with the classroom spaces that relate to what your educational vision would be with this design. So I have a couple of talking points with that. Big part of our efforts have been developing the educational program and this is identifying the number of classrooms, the types of classrooms, the sizes of the classrooms. This will serve as the blueprint for our design. And then we've started to put some schematic drawings together. I have a site plan to show you and then early sketch plans of each of the schools. So as I mentioned, really the most important part of this schematic design process is identifying an educational program. This is still ongoing. We also have a civil engineer that has been brought on board. They've been doing a lot of due diligence. They've been looking at, they've done, they've completed a survey of the property and then with our help in the district, looking at how to master plan that and come up with a design concept. They're also going to start doing a geotechnical investigation. This is a report that will look at the infiltration rates of stormwater into the ground. So then this will help them locate where those stormwater basins will be. And then depending on where those infiltration rates are ideal, this will help us dictate where other parts of the site context, things like play areas or multipurpose fields, where they would be located. For this project, this is extremely important. For this project, we are going to need a highway occupancy permit from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. So this is a lengthy process, so we want to make sure that we're getting a jumpstart on this quickly. So the civil engineer has been doing a scoping as to understanding what all the items that the Department of Transportation are going to require for this approval, some of the due diligence. And we have a meeting with them in September. We've also had them conduct a solar study, feasibility study on the use of solar energy on the campus. So this is the checklist and just to kind of give you a little bit of an overview of the work that we do, we meet regularly with the admin team every three weeks. But we also have a lot of ancillary meetings, so we've met with faculty a couple of times. We've met with some students. We've gone on the building tours. We've had Mr. Varner meet with our mechanical, electrical and plumbing engineers. We've also met with Green Township. So there is a lot of work that we've been doing, but typically we meet every three weeks with Mr. Bigger, Dr. Long, Mr. Widman, Mrs. Cash Dollar, Mr. Varner. Anytime that there is other members of the administration that need to be brought in, like Special Education Director, Mr. Nelson's been in the last couple of meetings, we've been including them on these discussions. So this is just that checklist and you can see not everything has been checked off. One of the items that is critical into completing the educational program is that the district has a very good understanding of how the scheduling is going to work in the 456 building. We actually have a meeting tomorrow to further those discussions. But this is just this checklist and we anticipate that all of these items are going to be complete by probably October of this year. So we went on a couple of building tours. Mannheim Township Middle School was one. There were two components to this school. This is right outside of Lancaster. We designed end of 2018, 2019. It's been open for about three or four years. One of them was the way that the classrooms are clustered into pods or into teams. So we went through the academic wings to look at that, which you can't see. This is an academic wing in the school that is the main hallway in a grade level, but then you can kind of see on the right-hand side, there's an opening, another hallway to go back to a cluster of classrooms. The other thing that we looked at at this school to help the district make a decision is this school could not afford an auditorium. It was not within their budget. They originally talked about doing a cafeteria, so it was a combination cafeteria and auditorium. Faculty gave us feedback. They gave their administrators feedback. They didn't think it was conducive to the things that they wanted to do in it. So we did a, we came up with a design for an oversized black box that also has some flexibility that's not just for small concerts or for drama, but they can use it for other events or activities within the school. So this served as some inspiration and you'll see in the 456 building, a black box design that we're looking at. The other school is Dallas Town Intermediate School. And if you recall, the concept that we had for your intermediate school, this is the inspiration for it. So this school has three, it's three schools within a school. So your administrators went down, they toured the building, they talked to their administrators. They had some lessons learned that they shared with them, things like parking and drop-off. Originally, they had the school set up that each of the wings was going to house a grade level. Then they changed it where they decided to go to, there was three different schools. So there was within one academic wing, there was three grade levels. So this was very beneficial. I think, Dr. Long, you've been there twice now. Yeah? And I don't know if you have anything else to add to any of those tours, but no? So the educational program that we've been developing, again, this is going to serve as the blueprint for the design. We really need to verify all the spaces that you need. And this will be a little bit in flux, but really the big thing that we want to look at is from the study, you had, we had a projected enrollment that was a five-year projected enrollment that Dr. Witham from our office verified. I think you had an outside agency that had helped you with your enrollment and then he has his methodology that he compared his data to your third-party agency. So based upon that five-year projected enrollment, plus a buffer of about 10%, your planned student capacity is around 2385. So for our general classrooms that we have, that we're designing for, if the building had every single seat occupied, if it was 100% capacity, that would yield 2,500 seats, but you want to operate at a 90% utilization. So that way you have room to grow, you have ease of scheduling different events on a daily basis. So when you look at the educational capacity, if all the seats are at 90% capacity, it's roughly 2,291 seats within the building. And if you compare your planned enrollment to the planned capacity, that leaves a buffer of about 40 students. The reason why we want to do this is to make sure that on day one, when you move in, you're not at 100% capacity. This is a 20-year project, so we have to build room to grow for the district. This enrollment projection is only five years. It's very difficult to project 10 and 15 years out. Five years, it's a little bit more predictable, but that's why we add in that 10%. So we're still working on this based upon some of the scheduling discussions. And then for the K3 educational program, Grandview has a projected enrollment of roughly 190 students. However, this school, this new Green Village, we have a planned capacity of 480 students. So at 90% occupancy, it's about 430 seats. So that exceeds Grandview's projections by 240 students. So what this allows you to do is if you want to redistrict or consolidate schools to move students into this facility in addition to the students from Grandview Elementary. So this is the fun stuff. This is the schematic site plan. One of the first discussions that we had with the administration is we need to make sure that the traffic on this site, that we can alleviate it as much as possible. And we're going to have a lot of buses. We're going to have a lot of students being dropped off by parents. And the district wanted a complete separation of bus traffic from parent traffic. So if you look at the orangish color, that is the building footprint, just to orient you. The top road, you can see that on the north of the page, that's Route 11. Cumberland Highway is on the right-hand side. And then the building footprint is in orange, so the intermediate school. You can see with the three academic wings in the middle and then the elementary school on the southern part. So you'll see that we have two driveways. What is labeled in blue is the routes for the buses and what is highlighted in red, this is for the parents. And the laser's not working on it, but if you don't mind, I'm going to step up right here a little bit. So the parent drop-off would work, they could come in either off of Cumberland Highway or Philadelphia Avenue. And for the intermediate school, they'll come into that parking that's right in the middle and each of those academic wings is going to act as a separate school. So depending on what wing that you're assigned to, we would create enough curb and sidewalk in those areas for the students to be dropped off curbside, go into their respective schools. In the event that a parent also has to drop off a student at Grandview, that then they could circle around and then you'll see that there is a network of sidewalks outside of the front of Grandview Elementary for those students to be dropped off. And then they would go back onto this access drive and then either empty out into Philadelphia or into Cumberland. The parking that's located in this area, that would be used for visitors and for faculty. And then on the other side, you have the blue, which is the buses. So buses would come in off of Route 11 and then you'll see this bus loop in the front of the intermediate school. So all of those angled parking spaces are for the buses to pull in so that students are being dropped off right on the sidewalk and you don't have to double park the buses. There's also some additional parking for faculty on the north end of the intermediate school. That parking could also be used for evening events. So that entrance that you see in red would be for evening events for the school. To the left of the footprint of the intermediate school, we've also identified a place for vans to drop students off. And then if the buses could come around to the south end and then circle around into this loop at the front of the elementary school so that all the students are entering into one entrance. However, the vehicles are completely separated, so the bus traffic will never co-mingle with the parent traffic. And then we have the service drive for the elementary school, which is on the left-hand corner. And then the service drive for the intermediate school is on that top right-hand corner. Couple of other items on the site plan, you'll see the academic wings. Also have outside of them, the play areas, designated play areas for each school. There's also some flex fields that could be used for physical education that's on either side of the parking. And we're also looking at where to put the playground for the elementary school. And most likely, it will be on the southern end in that bottom corner of the elementary school, kind of somewhat adjacent to where the bus drop-off is. As I mentioned, stormwater management, we're going to know more about stormwater management and where all the basins are going to go after we have the infiltration report back from the geotechnical engineer. And then this is the current schematic plan for the intermediate school. And you'll see at the top, this is all the public big box assembly spaces and then all of the academic wings and classrooms in those three wings on the southern part of the page. They are separated by that main street lobby that creates that safe and secure separation of those spaces. The two arrows on the top end are for the bus riders so that some of them are going to come in next to the gym, which is on the left-hand side. So there's the gymnasium and the auxiliary gym. And then you'll see in the center of the school, this is the black box theater that we discussed with the music department to the north of that. And then to the right entrance, you'll see the library and the cafeteria. And behind the cafeteria is the kitchen and where the service drive would be located. We feel really good and the administration feels really good with this layout. We'll further develop this as we get into the next design phase. Once we have finalized the educational program, we're going to make a few tweaks to the academic wing. So when we come back for the next update, you'll see a little bit more refinement in the academic wings for the intermediate school. And then the K3 floor plan, very similar concept. If you look on the drawing on the bottom, that's the first floor. There's the separation of the assembly spaces that are on the north end and then the academic wings on the southern end. So as you're walking down that hallway from the main entrance, on the left-hand side, you have the administration, so there'll be a secure vestibule upon entry. But on the right-hand side, you have the library, the gymnasium, the cafeteria. And then the academic wings, we've been meeting with multiple people from the administration to get some input on the classrooms and the layout of the classrooms and some of the adjacencies. And we're still going through some refinement with this school, but we feel pretty comfortable and the administration feels pretty comfortable with the educational program. Now it's just making it fit, making sure that it's, that the design is streamlined and we're trying to reduce the square footage as much as possible without impacting the size of your classrooms and the educational program. So this is just a preliminary schedule. As I mentioned, the Penn.HOP, which is the critical path for this project because we cannot start construction until we have that in place. So when we meet with them, when the civil engineer meets with them next month, we're going to know a little bit more about what that timeline is going to look like. But right now, we want to wrap up schematic design this fall and we'll come in with a preliminary cost estimate. Then once that is done, we're going to move into more design where we're going to include the faculty and meet with our interior designers so that they can design the classroom spaces. There'll also be a lot more involvement from our mechanical, electrical and plumbing engineers. And then in the spring, when we're finalizing this design development phase, where then, we would then have the Act 34 hearing for both of the projects. And this is where you would have a board resolution to authorize the maximum building construction cost and the total project cost. After that's complete, we would then start the construction documents. The construction documents is just finalizing the bid set. And it'll take a couple of months and then we're looking to put the project out to bid sometime the end of summer. sometime the end of summer, fall of 2026, when we anticipate that we would get the Penn dot H O P. And all of that would be in place in time for receipt of bids and start of construction. So I know that was a lot.
I have a question. Back on the traffic slide, I'm just curious as I'm looking at it, I'm assuming there will be traffic lights that will be necessary as I'm thinking about it. Because if you have buses coming, how would that work? I see buses only coming in off of Philadelphia Avenue. So are they only to use Route 11?
This will be, these will be conditions of the highway occupancy permit, excuse me. So there will have to be traffic counts that will be done. One of the things that Penn dot indicated with the civil engineer is the traffic counts needed to be done once school started so that, to your point, buses are out and about in the community. How is that impacting people going to work during the day, coming home in the evening? Those traffic counts, depending on those traffic counts are going to dictate what type of stop signs, lights, roundabouts, widening roads, we just don't know yet. That's why this is a critical part of this project.
Yeah, just looking at it, I live not too far from there and I was thinking about people coming down 997, trying to make a left, the parents. And I'm like, oh my goodness, that would be a nightmare. Or vice versa, if they're coming down 11, the buses trying to make a left across to get that. So I was just curious, but so they'll dictate to you what needs to go in there to make it presentable and actually functional for having that kind of design. So ultimately, they could kind of change what you're doing here if they think that's not feasible? Or do you not see any kind of major changes going on? Or maybe you don't know, I'm just curious.
The only thing that may change is depending on how many, if they would require traffic lights, there is a recommended distance from traffic light to traffic light.
Right, because that one's right there in Green Village.
That may, because it's so close to the intersection where the Sheetz is, is the one with the parent drop-off, does that require a traffic light? And would it be too close? So that may be an impact. But one of the things that we're going to also have to go through, it's not with, just with Penn dot, but also with the township, also with the county, that they have their approvals and review in place as well, that there may be some things that they require with land development that we would have to include and may have some adjustments to this design. So this right now is very much a sketch plan. So it's the intent, it's master planning, this is the way we want to move forward, we feel like it has all the pieces. But then when we start engineering it, talking to the township, the county, Penn dot, they're going to have their recommendations as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have a question, Anthony. Great laydown, I appreciate that. Having been to Dallas Town, was Crabtree-Roar-Brawl the only architect involved in that particular process?
Yes, in that intermediate school, yes.
Well, comparing the no auditorium at Mannheim, which I didn't get to see because it's not there anyhow, with the one in Dallas Town, I mean, that is such an impressive auditorium that you'd think you would be in some venue somewhere, not in rural Pennsylvania. So that was so well done, I really appreciate that. I hope ours looks just like that.
You're asking if, or?
I'm hoping.
You're hoping.
Not asking anything.
Yeah, so it's going to have, the black box will have a little bit of a different feel. So it won't have, it won't have a stage, it will have a makeshift stage. And for the amount of seats that you'll want in that theater, rather than using the typical auditorium seats, it's going to have to be bleacher-type seating that...
You want to draw the slide, Anthony, so they can visualize, because you have it.
Sure. Yeah. So it would be bleacher-type seating that you would see in the gymnasium, but with the seat back and armrest. This would give you a lot of flexibility. And I think that the intent from the administration was to provide an assembly space that you can get, I think it's like almost 1,000 students that we're looking at. Yeah, so you can get one grade level in there. But there's flexibility to do other things in there, which you can't quite do in, you can't quite do in the auditorium. So you'll kind of see where we have like the stage on the left-hand side. And when I say makeshift, it's like, you know, does it have like a fly loft and what's the rigging for the curtains and things like that? We're going to have to discuss those design elements further. But I think this gives you a lot of flexibility that you could use this more than half a dozen times during the year, which a lot of auditoriums do, that they're sit vacant. And then the administration, I think that their intent was to focus a little bit more on the middle school auditorium and really make that the feature theater with these current construction projects.
Yeah, so I think I should lower my expectations on this, but switch them over to the middle school. Thank you.
I have no doubt your other architect will do a great job with designing that space.
Anthony, can you make a comment on, you said about the traffic study, your consultant sort of figured it out. But when you do a traffic study, you want it done post-school session. I'm sure they have a way to do it, but they're going to have to adjust that traffic study because the school bus traffic and the parent drop-off traffic within the study, that is not going to be...
It's not there, right. Right. So the way the calculations will be, it's what's the normal traffic on these two roads in this area? What are the counts that they're seeing, you know, any given day? Then based upon the number of buses and the anticipated number of parent riders and students, they can calculate, they can generate what the anticipated traffic will be...
The current count includes school buses that eventually...
Come here, correct, correct.
But you're adding ten schools.
Yeah, right.
It's going to be the same ten schools.
Yeah. Yep. They have their methodologies and calculations of how they do it, but yeah, it seems kind of all, you know, there's only, yeah, Grand View just right down the road, you know, there's no school here yet, but they just need that baseline. That's a good place to start and yeah, we'll...
They expressed, and Mrs. Hartwell mentioned this, do you think two entrances under Route 11 are going to maybe flag Penn dot? Think they'll allow two entrances on Route 11, two new entrances?
Well, that's what we're going to, to help alleviate the traffic. That is, that's the best design, to have the two entrances. So that you're separating the buses from the parents. And so this is what the permit is going to be required for these driveways along the state road. So yeah, September is when the civil engineer, when we're first meeting with Penn dot, they've had some correspondence, but as far as like a sit-down and really start to roll up their sleeves and talk about it, that's going to happen in the next few weeks, the next five or six weeks.
Other board members, questions? I'll finish up with one more and then go back to my prelude and my opening comments. When we get to a budget time, and you'll be presenting us a budget, Mr. Bigger and I spoke about this a couple of months ago. And even with your current estimate for Crabtree's fees, you'll be able to break that down by year, a anticipated draw schedule?
Yes, yep, yep.
And we'll ask the same for the board, we'll ask the same for the other building, and this will go to what our funding on increases need to be, you know, what year do we jump up?
Yeah.
What are the draws per year?
Yeah.
Yours is pretty easy, it looks like it's all 2026.
We did provide a preliminary draw schedule, but once we have the preliminary cost estimate, we can update that and even update it again when you do the Act 34 hearing, when you adopt the cost for the project.
Mr. Bryant has a preliminary draw schedule, he doesn't promote buildings.
Can you explain to me how, I think this is more for the administration, but how would concerts work with the black box, the multipurpose space? What's the kind of plan for...
You said concerts?
Yeah, like if you're doing a spring band concert for...
This is no ordinary space. The stage is 80 feet wide.
Okay.
So, and it's deeper as well. When we went to Mannheim Township, they had a very small stage. And that was the thing that the principal said right away, that the stage is not big enough to do anything on. But they had different seating and things. With that retractable seating like that, that gives us so many variables of what we can do within there. So those seats would be pulled out, there'll be 900 handicap seating as well, and then the stage two feet off the ground. And then we have to work on finalizing this stage and what it needs. But that also, that stage then can be used as an educational space when it's not in a concert. But also then, where the seats are can also be used as another educational space. So actually, that space on that black box for where the 900 sits is the same size as a basketball court.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question, is there, we have like two hoops in there and...
Not in there, that's going to be just an open space.
No, that's open space.
Yeah.
It's the size of one. So that space can be used for many, many different activities in there.
But you could outfit it with...
You could, but there's already a gym and two aux gyms.
Right, but if you want to do like a tournament and you have two gyms, you know what I mean? I'm just thinking about your flexibility. Okay, thanks.
Anthony, how do you come up with the name Black Box for, I don't know?
Yeah, just like a black box theater, which is more of like a smaller intimate theater, although this one is anything but small. So we'll have to come up with another name for it. And typically, they are painted where there's a color scheme where everything's like a lot darker in it. But you know, again, we'll have to, we get further into design, we'll come up with a color scheme for it and maybe it's not darker colors, maybe it's something a little bit more vibrant, I don't know, but...
A little volume in gray.
School colors, you got it. All right, I like it.
Vibrant.
Interior designer's going to hate us, but it's going to be school colors.
We'll call it the Trojan blue box.
There you go. Green or wild yellow. Okay. Any other questions for Anthony? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Long, item 4.22, grade 7A, construction overview, AKA Cam South.
Yes.
Previously known as...
So thank you. Tonight, RLPS could not make it, there was a scheduling conflict, so I said that I would do that for them. So right now, what we're looking at is the timeline, but also where we're at with this. What we had a couple meetings ago, I should say more than a couple, it's been a little bit, a couple months ago, I forget, July is there and we don't meet in July. But we had five different diagrams of where the location of the building could be on south. And I just want to review that with the two pictures. We got down from A through E to options C and D. And I can run through them very quickly in my mind. Option A was a large building at where that field is, except it was a too-deep building and it stretched out.
Two-story.
It was a two-story. Sorry, what did I say, too-deep? Sorry, two-story. Then option B was right along McKinley Street down at the bottom. And then E was up along 81 more, it was parallel with 81. So C, as you can see there, C is on the corner of McKinley. And just to get you oriented, 81's on the right, McKinley's on the bottom, and Stouffer's on the left. So that is C. And then D is where it's back along the businesses. And then what's really neat is that these two options do not change our entrances on the property. So that is a big deal when we're looking at what we're going to do as far as construction. We were also able to go to a borough recreation department meeting. We found out that we were on the agenda for some reason. So we went and they were talking about the parking lot. We have an agreement with them that they can use the parking lot for overflow for the swimming pool during the summer. So they wanted to make sure when we build that we still allow them to use the parking lot. But I did have the opportunity to talk with Mr. Stonehill, the borough manager, and he is really excited about us doing something here on this property. And just, we're going to, if he's listening, we are going to save the parking lot. So they won't have any issues there.
Maybe he'll give us a credit on our stormwater fee.
I'll let you say that.
I hope he's still, I hope he is listening.
Yes. So we are a little bit behind Crabtree on this project. The civil engineers, we had five, we had RFPs go out to five different members there and four of them responded. So we will have a civil engineer by the end of this week or the beginning of next to begin working on the property, also getting with the borough. We need to have a borough meeting and Phil Wogamuth is the one that we have to go through. So it's nice to know people's names when we're doing things like that. The timeline for this building right now, and this is directly off the draw schedule that we were presented, so we're in schematic design right now until about November and then design development until April. Construction documents through September of '26 and then bidding, we're looking at fall, October, November, and then construction starting in February. This could change based off of the civil engineer and what's going to happen with that. It could either be sooner or it could be later depending on things that they run into that we might have some issues with. Once again, they're going to have to do a traffic study as well and some other things along with drainings, okay? And then RLPS also, yes, sir? Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
So RLPS also came and then started the operation study. They brought this really cool camera. It was a 360 3D camera. Mr. Bigger was telling me about it, they used it at Littlestown before when he was there. They started taking pictures through each one of those buildings and then on the outside and it gives them a great diagram. And we received a draft diagram and it was amazing how close it was to everything that we had in there. So this is going to be ongoing with our three buildings. The one on the corner there is our quote-unquote Coke Storage Building. It's three floors. The one up on the right-hand corner is our Transportation Building on Sider Press Road. And then this is the Reserve Center or Jo M. Bowen Building. So they're doing an operation study to see if we can consolidate or what we can do in order to get storage and things that we need as a district as well and make things more efficient. Are there any questions to this point on the update from RLPS?
Do we need to decide, or when will we be deciding on C or D?
When we get a little bit more in with the civil engineer. And then also, we have not developed a design yet for this building. We had just started talking about it last week at our meeting. We too meet every three weeks with them. Right now, we're in a, we're not meeting with the whole decision group yet. Matt and I are meeting with Melissa with them as well to just get the schedule built, the programming, so we can start talking about how we want the building laid out. So when that comes through, then we'll talk about C or D. It could be coming down just to 1A, 1... It could be coming down just to one, one place, and it might not even be the place that we chose, depending on things that are out of our control. Sure. Any other questions?
Other questions for Dr. Long?
It's less a question and more just a comment. I, I think the piece that might be unappealing to me about D is having the stadium right by eighty-one. That might kind of look cool if you're driving by on the highway. But when I think about listening to teammates on the field and coaches and just being able to focus, uh, it's, you know, eighty-one's a lot more than just the hum there, it's, it's pretty loud. Uh, Lance knows quite well. Um, I'd like to see the stadium off, off of eighty-one, or if we do do it there, to do a pretty, you know, build a wall to a bunch of trees, uh, uh, something to mitigate that, that noise.
Actually, if you go up McKinley right now, that's where the field is that we have fenced in that-
Yeah, yeah.
-across and different thing, uh, teams use.
Yeah.
So it is a distance from, it's, it's not as close as what they portrayed here. It is a distance from. And I guess you were the principal when you planted all those trees, correct? Um, along eighty-one is a sound block and they're still growing, so just, just making sure that you knew over there how it's laid out.
I, I am curious to know, with the, is there an option where you could keep the location of the building and move the stadium to where the two practice fields are instead? I know it would mean reconfiguring the drives there, but is there a way to make that fit or is that, that not an option? Just throwing it out.
We're in exploratory phase, so these are good questions, we can ask those.
Yep, I don't need answers. We're not making a decision tonight, but-
No, no, exploratory.
Cool.
Yeah, I, I would like to add that to that, um, closeness, my, my backyard actually butts up against eighty-one. And during, um, all of the COVID stuff, we had, you know, I was meeting with people outside and we were sitting in a circle. And, um, and it was hard to hear somebody across the circle in my backyard, like you were literally like yelling, I said, you know? Supposed to be having this kind of solidarity meeting, but it turned into a kind of an angry like, what, huh? So that is, that is a thing, I mean, I've experienced that, so.
Sure.
Well, I guess we conduct lots of athletic things going on there all the time now, those soccer fields and so forth. And does that seem to be a real problem on those fields? I know you might have a little more elevation, Lance, up from eighty-one than, you know, right down one. But-
You're lower.
I, I'm sitting below.
You're actually lower?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, 'cause, yeah, I am lower.
Yeah, I, I mean, Melissa and I haven't heard anything from the public or anything like that. I would have to ask Ms., um, Mr. Kimpel, the Athletic Director, if he ever heard of, of someone complaining or people complaining about that. Yeah, I can do that, it's no problem.
I noticed the one design has two practice fields, the other has three.
Uh, they were just placing some things on there, um, for us to look at, um, different things. We don't have to do three practice fields versus two.
I was just concerned as to whether we needed three because the one-
Well, well, the one comment, I believe, on this one was we lost our softball field. The softball field is up in the corner. Um, with this one, that's where our practice field was going over top. We could also put another practice field in between the, that loop right there if we needed to as well. But it's just, we were trying to get as much outside space as we could. Anyone else?
Just a comment, Dr. Long and Chris, I know several meetings ago, we talked about our staging of the projects. Whereas the four-six and the Green Village Elementary would go first and then we would-
I, I think we-
But I noticed on both, from both these presentations, they both show bidding-
Yeah.
-the fall of twenty-sixth.
So we, we proceeded as if we can do it all at the same time, and then we would defer if we need to the bid then.
They'll be ready to bid.
Yes, correct.
The seven-eight building will be ready to bid.
But we don't, right.
But we are, we're gonna bid the other two buildings first.
Correct. If we-
Did we decide that?
We didn't decide that, we just remember if you said there were five options, we said, which one would we prefer to delay? And we just said, if we need to, here are the scenarios. We didn't say we would. I just gave direction, say, we're moving ahead as if we can do them all, all at the same time, which is, um, we're not sure if we can accomplish that. But that's a financial decision more than it is a, a preference right now. So-
We don't know what the money's at.
Right, exactly, correct.
I thought we did talk about we wouldn't bid seven-eight until we knew what the hard number was on four-six Grand View. The way our number is called in this discussion.
Yeah, I don't think we voted, we just said, here are the options, we would, could delay either one, right.
We could, we could delay the Grand View or the seventy, because we had asked what were the positives if we did both of them up at Green Village as opposed to doing the middle school, and then there was some discussion about the middle school needing it more than building the new Grand View, and then we never kind of came back around to it. So I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss that there had been a decision made regarding that yet. So it sounds like we're just going full steam and then-
Yeah, yeah, whatever we need to back off financially, right.
Yep.
Yeah.
I also-
Again, but we don't know where we will be financially.
That's correct.
I mean, you can't bid two-hundred-and-forty million dollars based on budget, because what happens if you end up at three-hundred million?
Right.
You can't bid all three pro- buildings at the same time.
But we don't even have estimates yet, so we have a long way to go before we can get estimates.
I don't care if you have an estimate or not, you don't have a hard number.
This might be asking a question that's too far in advance, but the, uh, athletic field, um, at the, the middle school, would that be a turf field? Is that what we'd be looking at?
Yes.
Because I know we've struggled with not having that extra field at the high school.
Yes.
Because kids having to practice so late at night, and so we would be able to use that as well.
Yes, sir.
To help the high school.
We're looking at lights on it as well.
Good.
And, and the track around it, since North Track, we've been talking about that for a few years.
Okay.
Anyone else? So the next part of this, um, we're looking at moderni- modernizing our curriculum and courses. Um, and I just wanted to be able to get you in the conversation as well. Um, we don't have to do a lengthy conversation about this in a discussion. But, um, we have some related arts courses that have been around forever, um, and let me explain them to you. Oops, wrong way, sorry. With the K to five right now, the elementary school, um, there are four specials, and the special subjects are related arts, so we call them specials or related arts. Um, they're throughout the day, or one, one per day, um, and there's four of them. The problem is, is that the elementary runs on a five-day schedule. So when you have your special, the teacher gets planning time. And then on that, that day that you don't have a special, the teacher absorbs those minutes. And then what they do per contract is actually they use three of the five days for fifteen minutes in the morning before school starts as they're planning for that fifth day. So with that, um, we're looking at providing schedules at both the K to three and also at the four through six. Um, and we're looking at, um, a five-day schedule for probably the K to three, but we might be looking at a six, uh, six-day schedule for the four through six. Gives us a little bit more options, opens up things, um, and also allows us to do some different things for students. So with that, on the related arts, uh, for the six through eight, they have health, P.E., art, music, tech ed. There's a couple different things under tech ed that they, uh, do, STEM, and they do woodshop. Under business, they do e-learning and careers, they have ag science, they have rural language. They also use interventions during that time, enrichments, and band, uh, band and clubs also go through either activities period or if they can get them scheduled through the, um, special subjects. So what we're looking at is really getting your opinions on what needs to be involved with, uh, changing a course or introducing a course that would allow students to be current. I know that the four that we have, the teachers are really, really good at changing what they have to make a current, current activities, current items within the curriculum and also within the world today. But looking at, see if we can get a fifth schedule for, a fifth special for elementary, um, would be really nice for the teachers as well so that then they could have that, um, planning time, but also students could have a time that they are learning some more things, um, that touch their lives each day. So what I would like to do is just open it up for a discussion, just a couple minutes of things that you think about. Sometimes you talk to people and people say, you know, I'd really like to see this, or I'd really like to have this. If you've heard of anything, um, please, let, let's talk about it for just a couple minutes.
Is it for, for, this is for elementary, six, eight, or both?
Both.
Well, the one thing I'm, I'm thinking about, uh, for the elementary is that when you put in that fifth special, that's, uh, you know, a cost because you have, uh, and we would need to see that as well, uh, based on the needs of the students. Because I, I know we're, we're still struggling that we do not have enough interventionists. Uh, we don't have a, a person, uh, we took out a, a reading position that did the entire district for reading, and that person's no longer there. Uh, we don't have a reading coach anymore. Uh, so there are just some, I think we have to prioritize what our needs are. I don't think not having that fifth special is a good idea. I, I, I've, I've been aware of that for, since I've been on the board and even before. I mean, that fifth special really does help, but we gotta look at what's best for students and what's best for the staffing and our needs right now, because I know we're still not hitting the needs of those kids that need interventions. So I think it's a budgetary issue and we gotta look at what's best for the kids and where those dollars should go. That's the one thing that I, I think about.
Sure.
At the, at the elementary, um, just the elementary fifth sp- special, because I, I know that would be helpful to teachers, but at the same time, I think we gotta prioritize where that money's going.
Sure.
Well, I think we really need to consider STEM and AI. Now, is that part of library? I don't know.
It could be. I mean, in, in the planning, we've been talking about putting classrooms right off of the media center, the library, for STEM. So it could be.
Do you have any current of the specials, especially in six to eight? Like I saw tech ed, and I'm going back and, you know, my twenty-fifth, uh, high school reunion's next year, so to date myself just a wee bit. But, so I'm going back and I'm like, we used to like make balsa wood on these bandsaws and do all that kind of stuff. If that's still going on and I don't know what the curriculum is, can we move away from that into something that's more, uh, appropriate for where we are now in this day and age, um, and the advances that we've made? And I don't know that that's what's going on, but could we alter some of the current ones that we have that would be, uh, more realistic to some of the things that are going on right now? Uh, and to even just as we have the career tech, could we be doing things that kind of foster people into that? You know, I own a machine shop and we would have killed to have machinists that actually, you know, have a desire to do that. But you just can't find that in this area, even though we have all these world leaders around here, it's just not something that, that gets done. I think we're swinging back to that. Um, but just the trades, I think the earlier that you can get people in, interested in that and understanding that maybe not everyone, you still want to focus on education, but maybe college isn't for everyone. If you have a hard time sitting down in school, college, that's not your thing, right? Because it's just not. Uh, you know, and really incentivizing and, and trying to, to have opportunities that are more hands-on kind of kinetic learning stuff as opposed to, you know, some of the other things that might be offered.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have, uh, so I'm reminded of an article that, uh, Fay kindly, uh, brought up to us, uh, board members to read about, uh, what Mississippi had done to improve their education, uh, because they were always at the lowest end of the totem pole compared to all the other states. And one of the things that struck me as being an interesting approach was to not make teachers reading specialists, but to, to professional, professional development, give them some skills, some abilities, so they can kind of recognize issues before they get to be problems, and they could even do some intervention on some of the lower level. So it's kind of like making your teachers have some additional skills. And I've looked at, uh, the four specials for the lower grades, art, music, library, and phys ed. Now, maybe I'm wrong, but art, maybe you're going like this with your hand, or maybe using some scissors. Music, you might be tapping your feet, maybe doing this. Library, I don't know, you're probably not turning any pages, but you're hitting the computer keyboard. You're really not moving. And I think kids need to have a little more movement in every class. So I'm not suggesting every class has got to be like a phys ed class, but maybe if we could bring some professional development to teachers, so they know the appropriate times and when it's best to introduce movement, get kids off their butts and then, you know, moving around and it makes them better learners. Probably boys need it more than girls at that age because they're just full of, you know, maybe, you know, not to be sexist about it, but that's my experience. And I just think it's important because I think that kind of change makes kids not only learn better, but when they get to high school, they're healthier. And, and when they get to be an adult, they're not costing us all a lot of taxpayer dollars because they are healthier and not sick. So I'm more interested in some of the nuances about the programs rather than, you know, directly, you know, adding this or adding that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This makes me think of something that might be called integrated arts, where it's, say, a play. Uh, I can't imagine a third-grade play, yes, I can, it'd be great for the parents, but the kids have some reading to do, they have to memorize their lines, they get to sing some music, they're moving around on the stage. I think integrated learning, however it happens, is great, but for some of these specials, that might be an idea. Integrated arts.
Thank you.
In addition to the Mississippi article that, um, Chris had on our weekly, uh, report that I pointed out that everybody needed to read, I also today was on a webinar, um, relative to, it was a National School Board Association webinar, it was specific to math, but one of the things that came out in it was what Mike is talking about as far as professional development. And I think that our new schedule that we are moving to in another year is right on target for what was said today. That being that you can't look at how you were taught or even how you taught ten years ago because teaching is so different now. It certainly is different than when I graduated because, uh, I'm on my sixtieth reunion, not my thirty-fifth. So, you know, we've got to be looking at the present and the future, not holding on to how it was done in the past. And professional development is so important, and I'm so glad that we are focusing in on that. Was really brought out today in, in this webinar that I was on.
The, the one thing that, um, in, in reference to what you're saying there is, we've got to make sure though that these kids are getting the basics, because I've heard from different people, uh, just, uh, someone had an experience here recently, a high school girl couldn't spell certain very small words, you know, that, and, and don't know where the countries are, don't know where Europe is. We've got to make sure that we don't get lost and that we make sure that we are getting the basics out to the kids too, um, because that, that, that's really important. I know we want to go with innovation, but let's make sure kids have what they need, uh, with the basics. You know, the personal finance that we've talked about many times, those skills that are really going to make them productive citizens and that they can function in society. So I, we've got to be careful that we don't lose out on the basics, especially at the elementary, the basics that they need to be successful.
I think, um, I, I mean, I think many of these things serve to enhance the basics substantially. You know, I, I, I think about the kids that, whatever it is that they gravitate to, whether it's art or music or sports, how those things are often a hook for a kid and it makes them want to come to school and engage with the other components that maybe not every kid loves. Um, I really appreciate Mike's thing on integrating movement. Um, I, uh, question I have about STEM is, are there ways that we could, when I think about STEM, S-T-E-M, we're, we're already doing- What's up?
There's also STEAM and Stream and a lot of different acronyms.
Yeah, when I think about STEM though, um, we already have science classes, we already have math classes, we have some technology. When we talk about wanting to do STEM, is it- When we talk about wanting to do STEM, is it, is the engineering piece the piece that we're missing most? Um, and are there ways to integrate that within science and math already? I don't know. Um, and you might even have some teachers that are doing that, right? Um, some that are kinda bent in that direction. Um, that's one thing I wonder about that. I would, I would love to see, yeah, more STEM, more engineering, especially, um, if that is indeed the piece that is missing. Um, I think for me at the elementary level, uh, one that I've spoken, I've mentioned this to Chris before and maybe a few other board members, I don't know, um, I would love to see language at an earlier age, not English, but Spanish especially. Um, I think in the world we're in, it's, uh, whether, whether you're here in the US or elsewhere, I think it's a very practical skill. Uh, it's great for the brain. It's a lot, I mean, it's great that we do Spanish classes in, in high school and you can get one round of it in middle school depending what track you're on. But kids are able to learn a language at a, at a young age, um, and they have this advantage. Um, that I, you know, for me to learn a language is really difficult at this age. Uh, so I'd love to see kids learning some basic Spanish, especially, I do think about our ELL students and how, um, a high percentage of them do speak Spanish within their home. Um, and I know that for many of those kids, the other classes are really challenging, especially their first year or two. I'd love to see a class where those kids actually have a head start compared to the other kids. I think that could be really cool too. Um, not that they're not learning in that context. I still need to learn English, even though I grew up speaking it. Um, so it's not that they wouldn't be learning there. Um, but I think that could be a really neat special for the elementary age as if we had a, some other languages, um, at a young age.
I think before, for me, uh, I think it's a, in theory, it's a good idea, but I would need to see our test scores improve greatly in regular reading before I could get on board with another language. Cause I don't know that having them learn two languages at the same time would be beneficial and we have a lot of kids struggling at that age. I mean, that's just where I'm at, just, you know, a full disclosure. Um, because to Sherry's point, we do know that we have an issue. That's why K to three, you know, reading and we're doing, what is it? The walk to read? Is that, is that the correct? So, you know, really focusing on that, um, I, I would be hard pressed until we see some improvement in that area to, to add a foreign language at the early one. Six, six to eight, you know, that's, that's a little different, but definitely in that K to three, uh, I'm more inclined to really focus on that reading. But, you know, I don't even know, like what, uh, what are some specials that people have even thought of that have said to you? I, I can't imagine that we are not the only people that you've asked about this. Lord, I hope not.
No, there's, there's lots of different things. Word languages, one, um, health for younger kids, creative writing, dance, um, theater, um, poetry, career, career items. Uh, also, um, they call it project time where we introduce project-based learning as well. There, there are some things that are off the top of my head.
And I really like Stephanie's idea about the integrated arts cause that ticks a lot of boxes for me with the movement and also doing that different kinda stuff. Cause they could even maybe write their own little play, even though it's not gonna be anything super, you know, whatever, but some of those kids, you never know. It's very creative, so.
I'd, I'd like to piggyback off of two, um, um, what Ms. Agar said, uh, as far as the, what we've got going on now, especially the professional development, if, if, if we're, want our kids to be, uh, engaged. I think that the teachers need to be lifelong learners also and, um, giving those, giving them the skills. And so we're carving out that time for them to have that, which I think is, is excellent. We're headed the curve on that, I think, moving forward. And also, when I was in Germany in eighty-eight, when I was in the military, what I noticed is everyone over there, the, the, uh, the people that I met, the youngsters who were on my age, I was around twenty, twenty-one at the time, they all spoke in, in at least two languages. Some of them, three. And I think that I, I wouldn't wanna es- underestimate knowing what they say about a child's mind and how the plasticity of their mind is, is, is a lot greater when they're younger and their ability to actually grasp hold of language concepts and everything else to, to discount them and say that, you know, I mean, I think that it, it's gonna put us in a much better position for that younger generation as they move forward, as they're able to grasp a hold of, uh, uh, those different concepts, whether, not just in language, but just learning period. So I think something like that would be, would be excellent.
Anyone else?
Do we do any first semester, second semester, you know, is it possible to have?
It's a good idea.
Something one semester in specials and something different in the second semester? Is that something that's ever done? Used to be.
In, in the K to five, uh, unless you tell me differently now, correct?
Right now, we have science and social studies split by marking period. But when we've talked about this very idea discussion, when I'm here as an elementary principal group, we did bring that up and then we looked at staffing and funding and how that would run that way too, but it has been kicked around a little bit.
I was wondering how, like if you did thematic units, you know, a little bit art, a little bit of music, a little bit of this, how that all fits in with the certifications? You know, if you combine, combine them, I, I don't know. That's something that would have to be addressed, uh, you know, if you're certified in music and you, and you wanna do a unit in STEM, you're, you don't have the certification to do that, or maybe you do. But it, but I think it's a, a more creative approach to, to do it, to do it that way.
Absolutely.
And library has changed so much. Um, you know, when I was in the classroom, basically you, you know, when the primary kids went in, we'd read a book and then they'd go look for books. And, you know, that has all changed so much, how we're accessing information. Of course, we always want books in kids' hands.
Sure.
But, uh, you know, sitting, reading a book for the first twenty minutes of that lesson, there's other things that could be done in a systematic way to, to teach skills.
Sure.
Because the books are being read to them in the classroom. I always felt like that was duplicated in the classroom and then they'd go to the library and they'd have a book read to them or that, you know. So it's good thoughts on.
Very good thoughts. Well, thank you so much for having this discussion. Uh, if you come up with some other ideas, there's the communication man.
Yeah, we, we just wanna make sure we were, we were okay to start dabbling with some other ideas before we went down the path. So you encouraged us to consider some ideas, so that's what, we needed that permission for me to do that.
Also, if.
I think, I think it was, I think it was a very good discussion, all the board members, a lot of ideas. But, uh, there's a, just a couple summaries of some thoughts and they're all good ideas. But the dialogue that we were, that came, um, there are some, only so many hours in the school.
Right.
There's gonna be so much time and there are the basics that have to focus on. I think back to a fun time I had here just about two months ago. We took some great nie- we took a great niece and a great nephew out for a fun night. We had a lot of fun. And one place we went was a candy store. And the thing about, you know, a six-year-old and a nine-year-old going into a candy store, just give them a bag and come and fill it up. I loved it. My guess is they loved it too. It wasn't the best thing to do, but we all had fun.
Yes.
The altitude of like twenty-four ninety-nine a pound now.
Can I add one other thing that I was thinking about too? When we're making these decisions, like I think we need to see the data. What, where are we with their grade as far as our PSSA and if we could have a presentation on that soon to see what our numbers look like and, and what we're currently doing? And I know we're doing the, the, what is it called? Walk by reading?
Walk, walk to read.
Walk to read, but that's still not into all the schools. It's only into several of the schools because you're taking, putting it in at an incremental level. Um, whereas there are schools that are sitting out there that are not getting any of that yet. So that's, that's, that's an issue too. So I understand why you're doing it incrementally, but at the same time, we have other kids at other schools that need it and are not getting it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, concerned item, agenda items, um, this is a great time tonight for anyone who has questions on items five point oh one through five point ten. Uh, you know, two weeks when we meet, these will be, we'll vote for them all and one fell swoop. But to start with, uh, Mr. Bigger and the admin team, do you want to elaborate on any of these or some, some of them?
I, I don't see anything that is, uh, out of the ordinary, that you wouldn't normally see, nothing that stands out to me overall. Uh, five point oh two is the one I would just highlight. Uh, that is a software to help with, uh, residency locations related to our cyber school topic. So that's a new, uh, up and coming AI data research to get data and information to us much quicker, so we can help, um, deter any residencies who are not living here being billed for cyber school.
Uh, the cost there is twenty-five thousand. Uh, can you just refresh us on what we think we're probably losing right now by not having this in place? Do you have, do you?
I mean, we, uh.
A range or a ballpark?
How many did we end up finding last year? Just curious, that we're not living here? Okay, so, you know, if it's a special needs student, you're talking thirty thousand dollars a student. If it's a regular ed student, that's fifteen or eighteen thousand dollars a student, so.
It's a hundred or?
Yeah, you're do- that's, so that's just the ones we knew and we could find based on our own data and information.
Yeah, if you.
There were like five hundred out there, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's five hundred and thirty odd students in cyber school outside our district.
And that attachment, it actually shows you like about fourteen thousand per kid. So if you find two students, it pays for itself just like that.
Yep.
Cause it had that in the, in the big bid package there, so.
Right. Yep.
Board members, questions on any of those, um, agenda topics, five point oh one through five point ten? If you're wanting more information prior to the next meeting.
Yep.
And the best thing about this is you don't have to have them tonight. If you think about them tomorrow night, tomorrow morning, next week, just ask a question then.
Yep.
I have a question about five oh two again. Um, are we gonna find the inverse at all? Like the, hey, we have students that are like living here that. Or, or they're living here, but they're actually, you know.
Another.
Right, they're in Littlestown.
Potentially, yeah. I think potentially then it's not.
They don't report them.
I mean, do we have to? Like, how does that, how does that work?
It's just residency accuracy too. It's, maybe there is a regular ed student, like you said, who should be in a different school and doesn't know because of the address and they just went there and nobody checked it.
Sure.
Like, there's a lot of those, uh, items. And I would say to you, uh, working in Littlestown, the number of Maryland places that dropped off kids, I'm like, there's gotta be a whole bunch of students not living here that are gone to our school. And again, it's, it's hard, it's, we're not the, we're not the attendance police. We register them when they show up, we verify residency, but, you know, after that, we don't spend a lot of time doing this. I think this'll really help us just clean it up. Uh, we might find tuition students that wanna pay to come here that don't live here.
And this is a service that we could just run a report once a month if we wanted to.
I, I, I haven't looked that close at it, so Bobby, I don't know if you have a little more details than I do on it. I know you guys watched the webinar.
Yeah, I'm super excited about this, by the way. Um, so I can do ba- batch uploads, um, and then it'll give me back information and say, like, flag people that are not, um, there's a potential of them not being accurate. You can do individual searches. Um, so yes, I can do several batch uploads, probably cause we're a large district. I'll start with the cybers. Um, and then, you know, maybe hit different schools. So, does that answer your question?
At frequency, you could do as often as you want, cause you've, you've bought in.
As often, as often as we can.
Right, I realize it's a time.
Accomplish all the data and get it back and analyze it and send letters and.
Did they give you some typical, what they've been finding? Cause this is a pretty, pretty new software. I think it's your two or three.
It is fairly new. Schipensburg is using it and that's how I found out about it.
Yep.
Um, in their first week using it, they got four students. Um, so that's a big savings. And Wes Perry is also using it, so it is fairly new. It's great.
We're not the attendance police, but we are the fraud.
We're forced into this conversation, that's for sure. Exactly, there you go. Good, good ending on that.
Other questions, other items? Seven point oh one, gifts, grants, donations. Mr. Woodman, anything you'd like to highlight to? It's not a, pretty different. And board members, do you have any questions for tonight? Does this go on consent also, or?
Yeah.
This will be on consent?
Yeah. Everything through five, ten, yep.
Yep. Now, seven point oh one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that would be, no, that's a separate item. Under finance facility, you guys wanted that out of consent.
Oh, okay.
So we moved the gifts and donation under finance just so we could recognize at every board member. So we moved that into that section all by itself.
Right, right.
Yep.
Thank you.
So not be consent, yep.
All right, policy and legislation, four items. Mr. Bigger, your name behind each one.
Yeah, we started the process, so the first two are pretty easy, retired policies and ones without changes. And then the other ones are related to first read and second read, that were in the process prior to our summer break. So there's an overview of the changes and the recommendations that go with it in the, um, board agenda. So this'll be more just clarification and questions on the policies that are there.
And we have to vote on these individuals or can we vote on them in blocks?
You do, you can do them in blocks. That's why we did it this way. Yeah, rather than listing each policy, the first read is really just a first, not a final. The second read is the final. And then some are just review with no changes that we don't have to approve, but you just approve them anyway just cause it gets a new date on it.
And then it's within the ten years.
Then it's within the ten-year window, yeah. It's pretty simple, yeah.
At least it's been looked at.
Yep, yep.
Okay, no questions on policies and legislation section? Uh, section ten, privilege of the floor. I do not have my paper here in front of me, but there aren't many in the audience. So if you signed up for privilege of the floor, um, don't all rush to the front at once. Just take the time, draw, draw, whatever.
Hello, Valerie Jordan. Um, Mrs. Stein, I, I don't like paying a hundred and seventy-five dollars out of my school taxes for cyber charter schools. Uh, I calculated that. I wish we didn't have to. That's nine million dollars that could come directly out of the school district, uh, to, back to the school district. I'd like it figured out why the school district needs to give a billionaire running Amazon thirty-seven thousand seventeen dollars and seventy-six cents from January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five to June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. We are told to buy local, then let's do it. Help the local vendors around here instead of greedy bill- billionaires. I also agree with CASD board member Fay Gogler that we, as reasoned adults, have a responsibility to feed our hungry students. This, this goes from student one to student nine hun- nine thousand two hundred and twenty-two in this school district of ours. It's not enough to say we need reading specialists when children learn best when they are fed and aren't irritable when they come to school. This is not the fault of any public school administrator or public school teacher anywhere in this vast country of ours. Bring Gabby, the high school social worker, to a future school board meeting. I had a very nice conversation with her. She sat right next to me. A group of pen national women heard her speak. It's time you heard her to understand the struggles of two hundred and ninety-eight homeless students in our school district. It didn't hit me with Ben Gogler, uh, with Ben, um, Ra- Raiber, but it did hit me with Gabby. Students needing shampoo in a country that is built on so much wealth. My ears shouldn't believe students needing the simplest hygiene product. This is for you, board members, now. When the administration brings to you the course study of AP sociology, once again, please vote yes to it. Why? Two hundred and ninety-eight students do need help from caring adults. Sociology is a vocation. It's a calling, just like being a nun is. In closing, I leave you all with this thought, which I Googled. Yes, Jesus explicitly instructed his followers to feed the hungry. In the Gospel of Matthew, Jesus uses the parable of the last judgment to illustrate that caring for the needy, including feeding the hungry, is a fundamental aspect of following him. Jesus states, "For I was hungry and you gave me food." This is further emphasized in the Gospel. This is further emphasized in the Gospels through accounts of Jesus miraculously feeding large crowds of people. This above statement will be the closest thing you'll ever come to hearing the Bible being taught in any public school classroom while I'm still alive. Mrs. Jordan said what needed to be said in the most profound way. Lastly, what I cited to you here tonight, it's not our students' fault when greed now has overtaken our country. Thank you. Our students aren't to blame for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. Any other members of the audience wish privilege of the floor?
This is John Jordan. Uh, as I was sitting here, I haven't been to, uh, some meetings in a while, I remember that, uh, Ms. Stein had mentioned about the, uh, cyber charter school and that, uh, we had students that we were paying for that had moved out of the district. And I see this five point, uh, oh two here is on, working on that and hopefully to control that. And I'd like to encourage all the board members to get on board and make sure that this goes and happens so that we could capture all these people who are not doing what they're supposed to be doing. I don't understand how you catch it, but I know what you're talking about, people with Maryland plates coming to the school, a different school. But please make sure that when this comes for a vote, that we, as a board and a community, put this in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Any other members of the audience?
Comment on, comment on any agenda or non-agenda items? Okay. Um, item eleven point oh one, district enrollment summaries, um, for information purposes. Uh, any questions on that information? If you've had a chance to preview it? And then item twelve, new business discussion only. This is board members' public comment time.
I just wanted to, I saw, I was looking at the draft agenda for the nineteenth. I will not be here. But we do have an LIU, um, board meeting virtually next Tuesday, so I will make sure that you guys get information about that. Um, even though I saw it was on the agenda for next week for me to, or the nineteenth for me to talk about, uh, I will not be here, but I will make sure that you have that in hand once we have that meeting next week.
Any other board members?
Yeah, I have one. I'm curious to know, the, the process that we're using for this, how do we turn something into an agenda item? For example, uh, Stephanie Gauss has spoken up saying, "We're not recycling very much as a district." And I think she's totally right and we should try to do something about that. But how do we move from her bringing up a great point to some real action where either it's on the agenda item, uh, on as an agenda item, or the administration does some homework and brings some recommendations back about things that we could change? How's that intersect with the board? Because honestly, well, it's a great point. Um, you know, the administration could do that without the board saying, "Do this or not," you know? So I'm just curious to know about-
Yep, yeah, and that's a great question. It's a little bit of a refresher. Um, I've, I've used this, I think, before. But the way we've done this before and the way, uh, Chris came up with this, envisioned this, I, I love the idea. So if there's a thought that a board member wants to maybe bring up, then we bring it up in this as a new discussion and we discuss in committee of the whole whether we want to have a discussion at a voting meeting. So this is a discussion if we want to have a discussion on a vote. All right, I know that's really convoluted, but if, if the consensus of the board in that we're not voting tonight, but if there's a consensus of the members that are interested in, um, anything going forward, then we, we find out if there is a consensus. If there's not a consensus, then we don't want to spend administration time and efforts doing something that there's not a consensus on. So that would be the process and then, you know, at that point, bo- you know, administration or whoever would go back and do the research and it would eventually become an agenda topic. Does that make sense? So is there, I mean, to, to this point, now just to facilitate this point-
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we're not voting, but is it a consensus of the board that it is something that you would like to see as a official policy, procedure, approach? Or is it something you just want to police on our own?
Well, I, I think as, as Ben said, uh, administration can promote without board action if it's something that in the individual schools, you know, can be done. I don't see that it's something that requires board action, is my opinion.
I'm just wondering, like, I don't, it, even in our board report that we get, what, what is currently being done as far as recycling? Because I don't, I don't know. And, and then what is the recommendation going forward that we, we can do more with? At least I don't have that background on what is currently happening.
All I'll ask is when you get in to these topics, they generally are to-do lists for me and the team.
Right.
Uh, so be a little bit judicious on what topics and where we're going to spend our time. Because we can spend a lot of time in areas, and I'm not minimizing any of your ideas with the amount of work we have on the table. So all I ask is you just be judicious about something that's really important as a board that you give to us to, to do something with. That's all I ask.
Do they still have an environmental club here that maybe they could get a little-
If you guys want us to explore this topic, we'll be happy to.
Oh, okay.
You guys decide that it's important and you tell us to do it, we'll go do it.
No, then for me, no. I don't think that with everything else going on, that's not somewhere I would want your attention to be at this point, for me personally, so.
I guess I wonder, like, how do you take, so we have an environmental club, but how do we help empower them to do more within the district? I, I'm not, I don't want to see you devoting a lot of time to it, right? But I do think that that would be easy. There's a lot of low-hanging fruit with this. Even in this building, I don't see any place to recycle anything that I produce while I'm here. Um, and we're, I don't, I'm not necessarily making a proposal about frequency of where everything is, but yeah, could we work with some of the exist, are there teachers that are passionate about it that would take the lead so that it's not on the administration to figure out all the ins and outs?
I think that regardless, it's a yes or no. He's either going to get in the weeds with it or he's not.
Sure, sure. It's time and energy and effort by somebody, yeah.
That's my understanding based on what. So he's either getting in the weeds or he's not. So I would be a no vote for the weeds, for me.
It's either whether, do we want to continue to discuss it after tonight or do we want to?
I, I don't see it being something for further discussion.
I think it's, I think it is important. I think, um, for as large as a entity as the school district is, I'm sure there are a lot of ways that we could, uh, I, but we, I think we have some pretty big fish to fry in the very near future that, um, yeah, I don't know. I'm kind of, yeah.
So, uh, I just want to make a comment about, um, remark to us made early on in the meeting. And maybe it would be useful if the board and the community had a better understanding of, uh, how many people that are the demographic that Ed brought up at his president's report that were at risk of, you know, not staying in their home because of school taxes? I'm sure that person is not the only person.
Absolutely.
But this school board is responsible for over nine thousand two hundred plus students. That's our job, to keep them on the path to being successful so they can be productive people in our communities in the world. And although I have some heart for anybody that may be at risk for losing their home, I don't know what that person did their life, whole long life, decisions they made, but these kids are coming here. They have to be here and we have to educate them. So I'm a little more concerned about the students and a little less concerned about an individual who says, "I'm at risk because the taxes are too high." I look at every one of these reports, I see what we're paying. And every one of the things we're paying, we're paying more than we paid last year and the year before and the year before that. So inflation works for everything, including keeping this school running, the lights on, and doing the best for students. So if we had more information to know, we could balance, we got nine thousand two hundred students at risk here versus what? I don't know how many other people that are at risk. I'd like to know that kind of information before I start to pour my heart out and say, "No, we can't vote on more taxes or a higher tax rate because I just don't know why." So whatever we do, uh, our job is to educate every one of these students. And the community, the county, the state, the federal government, they are responsible for trying to keep these elderly people in their homes. If they cut Medicare and other kinds of things that people rely on, it's not us that's doing most of the harm. We're just trying to do our job.
Okay, so back to the discussion on, uh, recycling. I don't know, I'm kind of trying to figure out here on my notes, but I'm, think I'm reading the board, it's more police it on your own. This way, the way I think I'm reading it here. Um, but, um, again, I mean, that's kind of where I am personally. Uh, that, I mean, I think about it when you, when you walk into a convenience store, there's two garbage cans there. You decide where you want to put your key, put your plastic bottle or styrofoam cup or plastic bag. I mean, it's, it's all about choices and that's where I'm at. I, I mean, I think we have a great discussion here tonight on curriculum. We got schools of distinction since twenty thirty. How much time do we want to ask our administration to, to work on a recycling program?
Um, I don't, I'm not sure that's what we were asking. I just think we were asking the, for whoever to consider how we could be more efficient in climate control. We use a lot of paper, there's no recycling bins, there are just little things that could happen, building by building. Maybe it's something that, that Matt could work on, where, you know? Um, no one was asking the administration to take on a whole new plan. And I'm sure school boards have some kind of plan, where I'm sure we're not the only district that faces this. So maybe we should just do some networking as board members.
Actually, we asked the board of the, the district to do less. And that was simply, don't give everybody a plastic bottle of water.
Right.
Bring your own water if you need a hydrate. And the school doesn't have to provide every board member a bottle of water, so you're doing less because of environment. So there's other ways we could cut the waste and not burden the, the, the administration.
Any other discussions tonight? Okay, hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.